Good evening, everyone. This is a virtual public meeting of the Board of Education of Mount Healthy City Schools in compliance with the Ohio Department of Health's stay-at-home order by the Attorney General. This is the April 20th, 2020 meeting. First, I would like to, so this is a call to order, and I would like to have a roll call, please, Ms. Brooks.
Certainly. Ms. Bryant?
Here.
Mrs. Ellis?
Present.
Mr. Glenn?
Present.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yeah.
Dr. Turner?
Okay, next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Usually, I'm kind of thinking, given the circumstances, we possibly just skip that this evening. I don't know that everyone has a flag handy.
Well, we could just put our hands over our heart and tell each other.
We could, if we want to do that. Everyone want to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's really weird hearing all of that echoing back at me from everyone. Members have seen the agenda for this evening. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as written?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so that was moved by Ms. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes. Item five on the agenda is reading and signing of the minutes. Minutes for the special meeting that was held March 2nd, 2020, another special meeting, March 9th, 2020. Those were both in regards to our superintendent search. And a regular meeting held March 23rd have all been sent to the board members. And do I have a motion to approve those minutes as written?
So moved. Second.
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna, I have Mrs. Ellis made the motion, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, special orders, item six on the agenda. Item A, communications announcements, public input. Did anyone receive any emails from any members of the public that we would want to include in public input? Apparently not. Okay, Dr. Cosby, do we have communications or announcements?
No, I do have a recognition when you get there.
Okay. Item 5B, recognitions.
Okay, thank you. I would like to just take this time to recognize all of our staff for the wonderful effort that they've put into keeping our students learning up to this point. And I don't want to say names because I don't want to miss anyone, but I would like to say departments, administrative team, our teachers, our other building staff, along with food service workers, our tech team, our custodial staff, transportation. Everybody has been working so hard to make sure that our students are getting their assignments, that they're learning, that they're being fed, that all of their needs are being met. And I just wanted to make sure that I did acknowledge that. If I missed anyone, it was not intentional. And I'm thinking about all of them because they really have done a massive amount of work to make things happen as they are. And some of you, I hope, had a chance to see some of the, we've had a couple of articles that talk to either Mount Healthy students or staff. And I think that they've been very positive about the work that's being put into keeping our students going. So, thank you.
And I'd like to second that. I think, you know, the teachers, the people who are handling curriculum, the food service workers, everybody has just stepped up to an amazing extent to, to make sure that our students are getting what they need.
Agreed.
I think they all deserve a hand of applause from all of us.
Agreed.
Okay, item seven, vocational board report, Ms. Ellis.
I don't have a report today. I'll have to get back with y'all next, next month.
Okay. Item eight is the legislative liaison report. So, a few things to report on, and I'm wearing the wrong glasses to be able to read this very well, but that's okay. First, House Bill 197. Governor Mike DeWine has signed into law House Bill 197, which addresses the current COVID-19 outbreak. The provisions of the bill relating to schools are that it waives state testing requirements for schoolchildren for this year. It extends professional licenses for those who cannot get them renewed. It allows local governments to hold public meetings remotely and with transparency, as we're doing tonight. In addition, House Bill 197 eliminates state and federal testing for the 2019-2020 school year. No state report cards will be issued for that school year. It also provides a one-year safe harbor from sanctions related to previous report cards. The bill also freezes Ed Choice voucher eligibility at the 2019-2020 list of 517 buildings. You might recall from previous months that that was potentially going to go up. Additionally, students and their school-aged siblings who have attended or would be attending a building that is on the 2019-2020 list are still eligible to receive a voucher. School closures, the governor has extended the school closures throughout the state until at least May 1st. But unless something has happened in the last day or so that I haven't heard, that's, that's still...
No, today he changed it.
He changed it today.
He's closed until the end of your school's school year.
Okay, because the next thing I was going to say is don't be surprised if it gets extended till the end of the school year. All right, so it is now to the end of the school year. As far as national responses to COVID-19, Congress recently passed three separate bills that appropriated supplemental emergency funding and made important policy changes, many of which impact K-12 education. The first emergency bill, House Resolution 6074, provided support for state and local governments and assistance for affected small businesses. The second one, H.R. 6201, provided assistance to public health, nutrition, and emergency leave. It waived several, several federal regulations regarding the National School Lunch Act. And the third one, H.R. 748, provided states and local governments with funding to address many concerns. In regard to education, the third bill provided $30.75 billion in stabilizing funding for early childhood education, school districts, and higher education. As the federal government continues to respond to the COVID-19 public health crisis, additional emergency bills may be passed. And that's my report for tonight. Item nine, report of the treasurer, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you. I have two informational items. The first one is about preschool tuition. Obviously, since we are no longer having children come in, all the preschool tuition is waived through the rest of the year and until further commencement of school. So that's the first one. The second one is to discuss the borrowing rates for bonds. As you know, we have the building program going on. And in order to not run a levy in two years, we were able to find a way to purchase bonds for a 15-year period of time in order, and we can stretch that over 15 years. However, the bond section is totally defunct right now. Nobody is buying any bonds. So we really need to just be careful of how we're spending our money and how we're going forward because all of the economists are saying, even those who are naysayers normally, are saying to be very careful because next year could show quite a different scenario for all of our schools, all of our government, everybody. So I'm just saying that we just need to be careful and watch where we're going, not stop everything, but we, we've just got to look at everything very specifically. Any, any questions about that, or? Okay, the next one is item B, which is a recommendation to accept the schedule of bills for March of 2020.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Ellis, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, item C, I'd like to recommend the acceptance of the financial statement for March 2020.
Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Any discussion on that? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item D is a recommendation to accept a resolution to adopt tax rates for the upcoming fiscal year 2021.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Ellis, seconded, I say by Mr. Glenn. I know that we had more than one in there. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you, and that's all I have for you. Oh, sorry about that. Didn't go down quite far enough. Item E is a recommendation to approve payment for the following invoices. And I'll read them briefly to you and then give you a little explanation after you make the motion. The first one is an invoice from Steadham &amp; Paul for the design and development phase cost for the early learning child, is it childcare, Dr. Cosby, early learning?
Early learning center.
Thank you. Building in the amount of $69,790. Number two is an invoice from the Cincinnati Arts Association Education and Community Programs in the amount of $288. And item three is an invoice from Cincinnati Public Schools for instruction of Mount Healthy students who are incarcerated in the Cincinnati public area in the amount of $15,000. Do you want to make the motion and then I'll discuss?
Sure, could I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Okay, so that was moved by Mrs. Ellis. Was that a second, Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Okay.
A second.
All right, so?
Okay, let me give you a very brief description.
Can I say something? That third one you mentioned wasn't on ours. It wasn't on my agenda.
Right, and then the latest agenda came out, was forwarded about 4:15, just as I was leaving the office because we kept getting little things throughout the day. And we wanted to be able to, to pay these bills as soon as possible. What was that?
Mr. Kilgore?
La, he froze.
Do you want me to go ahead with?
Did we lose him?
I don't know.
We have to, we have to wait till we get him back.
Yeah.
Frozen in time.
Yeah, I don't think I have him in my phone. Does anybody have his contact information to give him a call?
I have it. I don't see him on here anymore.
No, he's dropped off.
Hey, Mr. Kilgore, it's Riva. Is everything okay? Oh. Okay, we're waiting on you. Thank you. Bye. Okay. Bye. Something came up and knocked him off. He said he's trying to get back on. This is one of the rules, if I'm not mistaken, Julie, that if someone, one of the board members was on, but they're taken off, we have to wait.
Yeah, we can't continue until he rejoins.
Okay.
I'm gonna go ahead and put up that full screen real quick while we wait on him. If necessary, we can also have him join via phone.
So he would, do we know what he would have to do to join by phone?
Yeah, on the email that went out, there should be a series of phone numbers. And you just call any of those phone numbers. And then you put in the meeting ID, which should also be on that email. And that's it.
Right. You want me to call and let him know that?
Might not be a bad idea.
Okay. Hey, Emmett? Can you, well, do you want to come by phone? You can do that. On that same email that's sent with the Zoom account, there, there's a list of phone numbers. So if you dial in on one of those numbers, it is a Zoom ID that you'll need to write down and then put in. But you can do it by phone. Okay, and like I said, be sure to write down that ID number because I can never remember it. I always jot it down. This is still not doing it? Oh, okay, yeah, so use the phone. So you want me to get off so you can try calling in? Oh, you can't get on the, do you want me to get that number to you? Okay, let me see. Guys, I have a, can anybody get that number for me? Can, do you have a second computer or something?
I, I can pull that up real quick for you.
Okay.
Give me just a moment.
Right, if you can't, it just dawned on me. If you can't get to the page, you don't have the numbers, right?
Okay, are you ready for the phone number?
Yes.
Okay, 312?
312.
626?
Oh, wait, wait a minute. He's getting ready to write it down.
Okay.
Let me know when you're ready, Emmett. Okay, 312?
626?
626.
6799?
6799. And wait a minute, what's the ID for that?
It's 978?
978.
4145?
4145.
4721?
4721. Do you hit pound after that?
You hit pound after that, and then it'll ask you to put in a participant ID. And it'll say, if you don't have a participant ID, just hit pound. So we'll just hit pound, there's no participant ID.
Right.
I assume we're not broadcasting all of this at the moment, right?
721.
Unfortunately, since we're in the meeting, we are.
And then pound, and then he says it'll ask you, do you have another number? And you don't, so you hit pound again. And then that should get you in, okay? All right. Okay, Emmett's gonna give it a try.
Okay.
I'm not sure, obviously, what's going on.
We may have Mr. Kilgore. Mr. Kilgore, are you there?
I am.
All right.
All right.
Oh, man.
Then we can continue. Becky, if you wouldn't mind, just, just going through those really quickly again.
Okay. One, the first one's an invoice for Steadham &amp; Paul for design and development, $69,790. The second one was Cincinnati Arts Association Education and Community Program, $288. And an invoice from CPS for instruction of Mount Healthy students for $15,000. And the reason these are being paid under then and now was because a purchase order wasn't done prior to this. Sometimes, for some reason, we don't always find out about these until after the fact, until the invoice comes in. And that's particularly true when it's an invoice regarding paying for children's instruction when they're incarcerated because we don't always get that information to us quick enough to put in a PO. So that's, I'm asking that they be paid, they've received and now paid under a then and now certificate for FY '20.
Hey, Becky?
Yes.
Carol? The 288, is that the incarceration? Or is the $15,000?
The $15,000 is the incarceration. The 288 is for a program, I believe, from South Elementary.
Okay. All right.
Back on.
Pardon?
Yeah, we can hear you, Emmett.
We can see you too.
Yes. Okay, were you starting to say something just before you got cut off before?
No, I wasn't. Well, I was saying, whoa, whoa, whoa. And that's when the weather took me off the air.
Okay, any, any discussion on this? All right, we've already had a motion and a second. Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
And now I am finished, thank you.
Thank you. Item 10 on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Take it away, Dr. Cosby.
All righty, well, we're learning as we go, that's for sure. And, and the kids are too. They're expected to do this type of thing so we could sort of understand what they're going through. I have some informational items. I would like to invite Jenny Webington in at this point to give us an update on the Early Learning Center.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Hi.
So I just wanted to give you all a quick update on where we are with our Early Learning Center. Over the course of the last couple of weeks, we've had several online meetings with folks from our design team, and also individual meetings with engineers from SHP and our facilities. Josh Stubeboll, we've also had individual meetings with Karen Powers to go over the... And Frederica Ricketts Church said and us had a call this morning to go over what we think the kitchen might need. So they're gonna take all this information that we have from the design team and from each of these individual departments, combine them all into one schematic design, and then they will present that to us by May first. They're planning to have those documents together, so we can get a first look of what we think we need. And after we review that and agree that we're all on the same page, they'll work on getting us some cost estimates. They're hoping to have those back by May fifteenth. I'm getting a thing, my internet connection's unstable. Can you still hear me? Okay.
Yes.
So by May fifteenth, we should have cost estimates, and we can review and adjust from there based on what we get back. And then we're hoping to have the final design ready for you to vote on the design by the June board meeting.
Okay. Good.
Thank you, Jenny. Great, great information. I do have something that I would like to propose at this point. It's something I've been thinking about, and my exec team has been thinking about, and I'd like for you guys to think about it. Ms. Ellis has been a part of this for thirty-plus years, quite a few pluses to that plus. And we just think that she's put so much into the district that it would be very nice if we were to name our building the C. Ellis Early Learning Center. So I would like for us to...
Really?
Carol is hearing this for the first time, thus probably explaining that look on her face. But Carol, we think that you do deserve it. That's the longest anybody's been on the board. I do know that at one point, you know, people had talked about maybe not using names, and I understand the rationale for that is because at some point, you know, people may not know who the person is. But the other way that we sort of look at it is if they don't know who Carol Ellis is, maybe they need to know, and we need to tell them, so.
Right.
So I would like for us to take that into consideration, maybe think about voting on it at the May meeting. Okay, thank you, thank you for entertaining that thought of mine. All right, now I will continue to move on. I've been asked by the board to sort of give an update on how our schools are running the education system. I decided to do that prior to bringing up our resolution, which we have, which will address a lot of these things. But I wanted to take a few minutes to sort of share with you what's going on. And when we got started, as I told you before, the team just jumped right in. Our high school students were issued their Chromebooks pretty much within the next week after we found out we were closing the buildings. And the elementary schools received packets to continue their work. So our students have been working full-on the whole time. Teachers have been working hard. We did have spring break last week. I tried to encourage people to take that break. The teachers and all did, of course. Most of the rest of us found that it was still too much to do, and with so many other people not on break, there were still a lot of meetings and everything last week, but I think most of us did get some sort of break. That being said, at the high school, and this is really interesting, and I'm so glad that they decided to move forward now that we know we're gonna be doing this remote online learning for the rest of the school year. What they have done is they have gathered the grades and scores that they've taken for this first month prior to us starting what they're calling their new plan of action. So they had kids continue learn, to learn, and to continue to get their grades and things. And now at this point, they're, they're, what they have is their third quarter grade is what is sort of being blended in with the work that they've done to be a semester grade. But because there are no more tests, as Julie has mentioned, they're not gonna be tested this year, and they pretty much got all the content knowledge for the test anyway. This would be, actually, we would be through with their testing by now. We're gonna have those students get the opportunity to improve their grades. We have quite a few students who are failing, maybe one class, some who are failing two, and/or more. And so they're gonna be tutored. The high school has set up three teams, a team red, yellow, and green. Team red are kids who failed more than one thing. They're gonna get intensive tutoring from people, content area-specific teachers in that area to help pull them up so that maybe they can get that credit that they're gonna lose if nothing changes. The yellow team is someone who may be doing some credit recovery work, maybe only not passing one grade, but the grade is pretty high. They'll also be given the same type of help, but they probably won't need as much. So once they finish, then they can move to team green. And the green team, those are students who have, they're right on track. They haven't failed anything. They're doing everything well. They're gonna get enrichment from their teachers. So they're still, everybody's checking in with the teacher. They have an advisory teacher who will be keeping up with where they are, who'll be moving them from red to yellow, hopefully to green. And we're real optimistic that a lot of students, when the teacher can help them single in on what it is they need to improve, that they will be able to improve it and help them be better prepared for next year. Because however we come back to school, our students have to pick up, you know, where they left off. And so we don't want them to just be left hanging. So this plan is really in great detail. They had a meeting today, and they have it all in their Google Docs and spreadsheets. And I was extremely impressed with it. So that will be starting, and it will continue throughout the rest of the school year now, we know. And that's sort of why they did it. They anticipated that this would happen. They're very good at anticipation, and they were right. Okay, so that is the plan of action for our high school. And junior high is basically doing the same thing. They're continuing their work as they started it. Teachers are assigned students by team. They work in teams, so it's a little bit different. And they will continue that. They will, they're on top of it. Special education, our students are, you know, continuing to work with their special ed teacher, intervention specialists, as well as their regular ed teacher. But any other thing that they needed, such as speech and language, occupational therapy, physical therapy, they will continue to provide those services through telecommunications when they can, when that's appropriate. And they're gonna do the best job that they can. If those services are not able to be provided, then we'll look at compensatory education if needed. But right now, they seem to be pretty confident that that's going well. Remote learning for the elementary schools, as I said, they started out with paper and packets. And so we have had an opportunity now to get Chromebooks to the families. So they are also doing online learning. They have done a lot of work with the teachers and with the students on how to interact with one another, how to, you know, make these daily assignments and things. The teachers are creating math videos, for example, to teach new concepts, K-six. They're creating videos to practice their phonetic awareness. There's a word here that's very long that I don't know how to say it, but it's about phonics. And also, for K-three, they are also creating videos to practice syllable division and some other math and ELA work. So they are really working hard as well. They're continuing to stay in touch with their teachers. They're holding their TBT meetings. They are really working hard, the staff and students. They are meeting on Google Meet. They meet, we had a big staff meeting. It was seventy-nine teachers at the high school staff meeting today. All of them, you know, that we could tell were on. It was amazing. And we're doing a lot of really, really special things. So I just wanted you to know that they are actually doing most of the learning actually online now, still trying to, you know, make sure. For some teachers who are finding that maybe most of their kids passed, any teacher who has time is making contact, reaching out to help, find other students, call them, you know, whatever they can do to try to pull as many students in as we can on this. But I guess we'll have to remember that even when we have regular school, you don't have a hundred percent attendance. Yep, so that's the plan of action. Let's me see, I wanted to go over that with you guys.
Reva, could you, could you give us a little bit of an update on the, the food service that we're providing also?
Yes, food service is providing breakfast and lunch to the students all five days on the one-time pickup during the week. And they have volunteers who are helping our food service department do that. The only week that they didn't do it was last week, which was spring break, but it picked right back up again. They're sending home one-call-now messages to inform families, you know, that they can come and pick up those meals. And my understanding is we're getting a lot of participation in that program. So we are continuing to feed the students as well. Yes.
Thank you.
Reva?
Yes.
I wanted to know, do we have very many students that we have not been able to reach? As far as, you know, maybe they have the Chromebooks and maybe they don't? Have we been able to touch base with those students?
Yeah, that is the ongoing, the majority of the students, I think on the high school meeting today, they said, I think we were maybe fifteen, fifteen percent, eleven percent of the students was all that they have not been able to contact. Most, none, he had a very high percentage, eighty-nine percent of the students have at least, you know, doing work, done some work, so they know that they're connected to them. That's lower than the national, the statewide average, and we're really doing better than most people in our area. It is very hard. We know the reasons why sometimes kids who were involved when we were coming to school are not involved now. Some of those reasons are parents are working and, you know, they're babysitting siblings. Some of the students, the Wi-Fi, and we're trying to help everybody get on Wi-Fi as much as we can. We did, you know, send them information about how to get free Wi-Fi. But for example, if you owed Verizon money, then they wouldn't sign you up for free. So some people might have missed out, you know, in that situation. There is a concern that we have a few students who may be in not the best situation, which is with their parents, you know, like hard to connect with parents at home. Things might not be going as well as they should. But our, but our teachers, they are trying to contact their advisory kids, or if you're in elementary, let's say you have twenty-one students, they're trying to contact each one of those students. So yes, there is a number of students that we have not been able to contact after they left, but we are definitely continuing to try.
Okay, thank you.
The next thing that I wanted to update you on before we go to the resolution is that the cleaning of the buildings, as you know, when we left out, when I say we, we started to work from home, the custodial staff went and cleaned everything. My understanding is that all the buildings have been cleaned. And when people come in for any reason, we've had a couple of reasons for people to come in. For example, we had to go in to distribute the Chromebooks. The cleaning staff came behind and, you know, cleaned again. Now, what they're needing to look into is, since we know that we're not coming back to school for the rest of the school year, we have to figure out a way for staff to come in and get their belongings, because they didn't leave prepared for the summer. So we're gonna develop, you know, like a schedule to make sure we keep our six-foot distance, to make sure, what we're gonna try to do is, if we can find gloves that are not very expensive, maybe have them available as they walk in to put on if they need them. We are gonna stagger how and when they come in. Actually, tomorrow, we're holding our cabinet meeting, so we will develop that process. But that is a process that needs to happen. And we're also going to start thinking about what will next year look like. We will take direction, of course, from the state as it's given, but we realize we can't wait until we get direction. Because today, basically, the governor said that they're gonna leave a lot of way, leeway for districts to manage this. Like he may say you have to maintain distance, but how you do it will be left to the schools. So we're gonna start discussing that, like I said, as soon as tomorrow in our cabinet meeting. Okay, so those are those things. Now, what I'd like to do to assure that everything that we're doing is approved by the board, there is a resolution that I would like to share. You have it. It has been shared with you all. And, and it's a lot to it, so I will, I, I will read, I guess, the whereas, and, and sort of then go through the other part a little bit differently. But this is a resolution for the continued operation of schools during the pendency of Executive Order 2020-01D, the Ohio Department of Health Director's Order Regarding the Closure of All District K-12 Schools in the State of Ohio and the Passage of amended Substitute House Bill 197, signed by Governor Dewan on March 27th, 2020. Dr. Turner did share with you basically the things that are in that bill. Whereas COVID-19 is a respiratory disease that can result in serious illness or death and can easily spread from person to person between individuals who are in close contact with each other within about six feet or through the touching of a surface that has the virus on it, then touching one's own mouth, nose, eyes. And whereas the governor and the 133rd General Assembly of the Ohio Legislature have declared a state of emergency with respect to the spread of the novel coronavirus. And whereas the Ohio Department of Health has ordered that all K-12 schools be closed. And whereas this Sub-House Bill 197, in effect during the pendency of the emergency, declared by Executive Order 2020-0ID, oh, one D, provides for significant changes to the State Open Meetings Act, provides for online remote learning to meet annual educational hours for the 2019-2020 school year, provides for telehealth communications for professional licensed service providers, providing related services to students under IEPs, provides for the suspension of the state educational testing requirements, provide for the suspension of overall letter grade report cards for school districts, provides for the suspension of the third grade reading guarantee, provides graduation requirements for 12th grade students, for regular and special education students, and provides for the possible suspension of educational employees evaluation requirements under OTES, OC, ESC, and OPAS. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Mount Healthy City School District in Hamilton County, Ohio, as follows. Section one deals with school closures effective 12:01 a.m. on March 17th, 2020, continuing at least until May 1st. And as we've said, that's changed now for the school year. All school district buildings are closed to students. The Board confirms the superintendent's authority to comply with this order. The second one deals with remote learning opportunities. The Board hereby authorizes and adopts the attached educational plan, which I just sort of shared with you as Exhibit A, to provide for online learning opportunities in accordance with the requirements of the House Bill 197. It is the intent of the Board that the attached educational plan will provide for remote learning opportunities for students to make up complete and unlimited number of educational hours. to make up complete and unlimited number of educational hours in lieu of attendance on the days when school buildings are not open to students during the twenty-nineteen twenty-twenty school year. Section two um, is about suspending the board policy regarding stu- student grading system. And so that I don't have to read through this, basically what this is saying is that the Board authorizes the superintendent and school administration to develop and implement a modification for grading policies for each course or grade level within the Mount Healthy City School District. Um, it suspends any and all board policies concerning interscholastic athletic eligibility for the school year. And also provides alternative methods for promotion grade to grade. The next section four is graduation requirements. The, the gist of that is that the high school principal and the superintendent are authorized to make any and all decisions concerning those students who are on track for graduation to determine whether or not they've met the requirements for graduation. It also um, does say that we can go to the minimum that the state requires. So if we, if we have any requirements that are above and beyond what the state says we have to do, then we can decide not to do that. Section five is supplemental pay for spring athletics and co-curricular contracts for employment. And so we've talked about this and the Board authorizes the superintendent and treasurer. We talked about prorating this amount to one-half of the supplemental activity contract um, for fourth quarter and spring athletic activity. Section six talks about board meetings um, and it tells why that they've decided. And that's because they want to prevent the spread, that now the boards can um, meet electronically, telephonically or through other electronic means, including but not limited to conference calls or other video meeting technology, which is what we're doing now. Okay, um. The Board intends to fully honor its obligations under the Open Meetings Act. And that's about the trans- transparency piece, which is why when um, we lost Mr. Kilgore, we had to wait for him to come back. Teacher and administrator evaluations pursuant to the provisions of the House Bill. The Board hereby authorizes the superintendent and treasurer to enter into any MOUs necessary or appropriate to modify any pres- provisions of the collective bargaining agreement necessary to complete teacher counselor and administrator evaluations for the twenty-nineteen twenty-twenty contract year. Um, in the alternative, the superintendent may determine that it is impossible or impractical to conduct an evaluation for teachers for the nineteen-twenty school year. Administrative evaluations will be completed for this contract year. The effective date, um, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and immediately after its adoption and shall supersede and replace any prior resolution or act of this board that may be inconsistent or duplicative with the provisions of this resolution. Um, the Board of Education hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the adoption of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of this Board of Education and that all deliberations of this Board of Education and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in the meeting, open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section one point one, point two-two, ORC. So now we need to have um, a motion and a second. Because you guys will need to approve it, but of course, questions too.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second? Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Do we have any discussion on any aspects of it?
I have one, um, should we go ahead and extend it to the end of the school year, since that happened just today?
We can do that, we'd be going back to section one, school building closure. And we could say continuing until the end of the school year.
Okay.
Because that date would be different for different school districts.
Right.
Okay, and just uh, so everyone understands the part about the supplemental contracts. That would be uh, our coaches, uh, anyone who was um, I don't know if we have faculty advisors for some of the clubs and things. So um, the idea was that people might have been counting on some of that money. And so we didn't want to just say, well, if you didn't have your sport this season, you're out of luck. But we also didn't want to, uh, you know, we, we can't really justify paying the full amount if people are not performing those jobs. So uh, that's the prorated, and we decided fifty percent for everyone, rather than trying to decide who had done how much uh, in the fall. Depending on what's happening, then it could be, you know, it could be that we won't have any supplementals in the fall. You know, who knows what might happen at that point, but this would just be for the spring.
Okay, um, I, I heard you duly say it was just for the spring. So if any of those, any of our staff did something in the first semester, were they paid for it, or is this something they get just at the end of the year?
We have um, fall, winter, and spring supplementals. And we also have some that are paid at the end of the year. So um, the exec cabinet uh, has not had an opportunity to discuss the year-end ones yet. I'm assuming we'll do that tomorrow now, Riva. So, but we've got a little bit of time to discuss the um, annual ones.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Sure, Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Um, B, on my superintendent's report, a recommendation to approve a resolution for the continued operation. Uh, sorry, guys, that's just what you approved. We move on to C. A recommendation to approve the continuation of system preventive maintenance and full coverage extended warranty by M-Cord ALC, the total cost of that is forty-three thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Um, could you explain what that is?
Um, I am grateful that Jenny Wetherington is still on the phone, and I'm gonna let Jenny answer that.
I, sure, um, so that is for our controls for our HVAC system and our um, freezers, in case they go down. So uh, this is for all the maintenance and programming for those.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Jenny.
Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
And Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Okay, and D is a recommendation to approve a one-year contract with Peck, Hanaford, and Briggs for preventive maintenance for HVAC for all district buildings. The total cost for that is seventy-seven thousand and eighty-eight dollars.
Do I have a motion to approve that?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Ms. Bryant, um, any discussion?
Um, yes, what is the difference between uh, this one and the one we just approved?
So the one you just approved was for the controls um, to gram when they turn on and off.
Okay.
This one is for the maintenance of the actual equipment, so the actual air conditioning um, and heating that we have.
They actually come out and do work on them.
Yeah, so they like change the furnace filters and everything like that is included in this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
And Dr. Turner.
Yes.
All right, next we have the first reading for recommended Mount Healthy Board of Education bylaws and policy changes.
And we all received that in, in our emails for, for the meeting.
Right, and since it's a first reading, you don't have to do anything more than just look over that. Then F is a recommendation to adopt the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
No, wait, we've got a new one in there. F has changed to, to accept a donation from University of Cincinnati.
Okay.
South Elementary Three-D Printer Club for Supplies and a Stipend in the amount of nine hundred dollars.
Oh, nice.
That was on probably the four-fifteen agenda.
Okay, so Becky, so that you're saying will actually end up being E?
No, uh, actually it'll be F.
F.
And then this will be G, and G will be the consent agenda.
Okay.
Okay, um, so do I have a motion to accept the donation from UC?
Second.
They moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Bryant, any discussion?
Um, what are they donating?
Um, actually, it, it's a, uh, they donated nine hundred dollars. Seven fifty of that will be a stipend for the teacher who ran this club. And a hundred and fifty dollars is for the supplies that need to be purchased.
Okay, good news.
Yeah, that sounds like good news.
We like free money.
We like donations, yeah. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
And Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, and now G is the recommendation to adopt the consent agenda.
Now, there could be um, some additional resignation came in late. Do you, you want me to read off the one I've got, Riva?
Um.
How many do you have on yours?
Five, isn't it?
I have seven, so we must have gotten two more.
Okay, the last one is Benjamin Ty- Titus?
Titmus. Uh, it's Carrie Karns, uh, how do you say that, Riva, Denaire?
Yeah, that's.
She's at the top of mind.
Okay, next one should be Megan Flessner from South Elementary.
I had a bag in Miller.
No, this, that's a new one.
Yeah, Megan Flessner's a new one. How about Virginia Hazelwood?
We have.
She's on here.
Chiquita Hughes.
No, she's not on.
Okay, Jean Maxim, Megan Millard, and Benjamin Titmus.
Okay.
And I think those are the only differences.
Do we have seven, or five, or six of them from South Elementary?
Uh, we have seven total, one, two, three, four, five from South.
What about those two you just added on?
Uh, one, one was from South and one was.
Two are central office, aren't they?
Yeah.
Basically.
Uh, there's only one at Central Office.
Well, Maxim's at the junior senior high school.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay, if y'all sent the agenda out, I'll look on it.
All right.
You, this was sent out, right?
Yeah, at around.
Okay. I'll look at that.
Okay, so we will be voting on it as we received with those additional resignations that um, that Becky just read off for us.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Ms. Bryant, any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
And Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Thank you, that's it for me.
All right, um, thank you. Item eleven, addendum to the agenda, there is none. Twelve, special orders, there are none. Uh, thirteen, open discussion by the Board of Education. Uh, and here we have a presentation of content concerning the potential use of uh, solar energy for some of our buildings. Uh, this is something that was discussed at a meeting a year or two ago. I think it was a completely different company, and that fell through. I'm not quite sure what the details were on that, but uh, so we never did end up following through on that. So this is a new, a new proposal, and we have a presentation on that. Okay, do we have our presenters with us now?
Yep, I believe they're with us one, yeah, there you go, he just unmuted.
Okay, so we're ready for your presentation. Uh, if you want to introduce yourselves and tell us what company you're with, and go ahead with the presentation.
Well, hello, this, amazing, can you, and everybody see my screen, this is Pablo Diaz. I'm the CEO of Direct Solar of America, hope everybody's doing well this afternoon. Um, can I read your screen here?
Sure.
Okay, uh, uh.
Oh, no.
Need to share your screen like before.
Yeah, we can't, we can't see it, I'm sorry.
Okay, let me see here. What, is it, is it at the, where's the, where's the shirt, go share.
Should be down at the bottom.
How about now? Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Well, good afternoon, everybody, uh, as I was saying earlier, my name is Pablo Diaz, I'm the CEO of Direct Solar of America. I, I, uh, is this, do we have the entire board, should kind of give me the, 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 who, who are the attendees? From the Board of Directors for the school district?
We have the entire school board, yes, and the superintendent and treasurer also.
Excellent, excellent pleasure, pleasure, everybody to reach you, okay, well, get started. So, Direct Solar of America, uh, this, this proposal is uh, custom tailored to your school district and your, and your uh, exact solar uh, uh, electronic profile needs. So uh, let me just start with uh, Direct Solar of America is a national program, we're publicly traded. We have forty thousand shareholders, and last year, our Board of Directors approved a program that is actually dear and true to my heart. My, my father was a principal for many, many years, so the school districts uh, matter a lot to, to us and, and to me personally, this program. Uh, being that we're publicly traded, our, our, our Board of Directors, that they approved this program, this specific, what you're gonna hear today is, is tailor-made for the school districts around the nation. Uh, we're actively participating in, in programs in California, Florida, Arizona. Uh, we just started working with Tennessee, and uh, and then the coronavirus just uh, imploded everything for everybody as, as we're all experiencing. Um, which actually at the end of this, uh, at the end of this presentation, we have a, 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 our own little version of a stimulus to package to try to provide to, to help participants of our program. Um, on, on this, what we're gonna learn about today, I'm gonna just kind of fast forward through some of the slides that won't afford this presentation to everybody, so you all can review it, uh, your own leisure and pace that you'd like. But I'm gonna kind of move through the different slides. that you'd like, but I'm going to kind of move through the different slides for efficiency and whatnot. So this program, there's no cost to qualifying schools. When I, when I say no cost, I mean absolutely zero dollars outside of the electricity you're going to purchase from the solar systems that we install. Uh, these solar systems historically save millions of dollars on a per-school basis, which we'll go through later. Uh, you have instant financial impact on your bottom line, electricity is actually one of the higher line items, as you well know, of, of costs for, for a school. And, uh, as we're going to work through this, you're going to see how, how we can divert those funds, well, uh, whatever place, location you really choose. Actually, so th- these systems are installed, operated, insured, and maintained for the life of the system by, by, it would be by ourselves and our syndication of funding partners. So if there's a, any maintenance, it's not your, it's not something you're concerned about, if it's, if once it goes on the roof tops, as a matter of fact, we also, uh, uh, ensure and, and maintain the, the roof space that the solar system is connected to. We are not, for everybody, we are not the contractors, we only use, we are, we are the capital. So we're the money in the, in the equation of, of this program. We use local vetted contractors in every region that, that we work in, for very specific reasons, one, elec- electricity has lots of regional codes that can be different from one city to the next, and it's definitely different from one state to the next, so there, it always behooves us to use local contractors that are experienced, brings jobs to the community, and also they, they know their electrical code there in that particular region. If anybody that's on here, if you have any questions, just go ahead and chime in, and, and we'll, we'll work through any, any questions you have right now. Um, these solar programs also include, when we, when we put a solar system in our school, as we, we don't just put it on there and we leave, we actually sit there and participate with the schools, we have, we have, uh, local pro- programs that we're try, where we're trying to help residential customers also, that, that are servicing that, you know, that are servicing that school to help convert them, help them get into the benefits of solar also. So it's for the school and the, and the participants. Benefits to schools on, on a, on a national basis, this is pretty, uh, if you look, eleven percent of the energy consumption by US buildings come out of, out of a school, out of school buildings, so if you think about it, that's a lot of, a lot of energy right there. The, the entire, an entire load is eleven percent is coming from that, and very, very minimal amount of schools actually take, uh, use solar, use solar programs. There's a few reasons why that is. Pardon me. One, the, the, it's, it's, it's hard to put the, the capital together for these types of programs, right? There, when, uh, and especially for, for something of a national magnitude. If we go over to, if we look at the Ohio footprint, you have thirty-six hundred, over thirty-six hundred schools, only forty-five of those schools in, in, on your state have solar, for very low, low, low per ten- penetration level. Um, a few reasons that, that it's like that, one, electricity is not fairly expensive there, it's in the middle range of a cost average, so is to, uh, put together the capital to, in order to penetrate these, you know, and bring these advantages to the school systems. That's one of the benefits that, that we're presenting today, it's, we have the structured capital to, to do buildings that, that we have amma- uh, amalgamated here that we're going to show you right now. Also, bringing, uh, do, bringing the solar. Sorry, I haven't. Can't hear too well, okay, here we go. Sorry about that, pardon me. So again, like we were saying earlier, zero pocket out of cost for the school systems have instant financial impact for the bottom line of, of any, of any school that we install the solar system. Direct Solar, I want to explain a little bit of our business model. We, we, on the landscape, we pu- we bring together the capital, the syndication of capital funding partners, contractors that we use that are local from that location, uh, and, and it gives more, uh, it gives more options to the schools. Uh, and we've been featured in several magazines and news articles calling us the rocket mortgage, the, the, of, of solar, because we put, we have all these relationships, and we have on a national basis, and and, and as you will see in here, each school has its own energy footprint, and it's, and we've customized a unique solution for each one. As I said earlier, we're publicly traded, uh, and, uh, and fully reporting to the Security and Exchange Commissions. If we go to the first drawing here, is one of your school systems right here, you'll see the, the, the proposed locations that we would put the, the panels, right here, this is initial rendering. If there was something that you wanted to move forward, we obviously get our site technician that would review this, go, uh, do a harder analysis and technical, uh, presentation of everything that we're presenting here. So this is an initial proposal we're looking at.
So South?
Yeah, it's Mount, that was the high school.
Yes, this. Mm-hmm, this is Mount Healthy House, House, High School right here. Here's the seventeen thirty-eight Compton Road location.
Yes, South.
This is the twenty-one seventy Struble Road.
That would be North Strubbs.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, and again, we, I was, you're going to get the, your own copy of this proposal, and you'll be able to review more, more detail. I know we're on limited time, so I'm kind of moving forward to the, to the relevant points and facts. This one is at the eighty-one twenty-one Hamilton Avenue location. And one, one benefit of solar, like I was mentioning earlier, once it's attached to your roof system, we become the maintainer of that roof now, right? We, we ensure it, we maintain it because it's, it's attached, the roof is attached to the solar system, it becomes part of our subsidies that we can, the maintenance of it, that we can utilize tax, rebay tax incentives that are out in the marketplace. So any questions about the rendering or the locations of the buildings, or what you're looking at?
Yeah, what happens if it starts leaking underneath your panels?
Everything has a, uh, tw- twenty-year, it, it becomes our responsibility, we, we have to fix it, any penetration, everything is, there, that's, it's ma- also, the contractors that install the material have to, have to submit a twenty-year warranty, so it's, if, if there's any leakage, it's maintained and covered from the contractors and, and and it's something that it's a part of the PPA that we're, I'm going to be presenting earlier, uh, in a little bit. So let's go over to slide number eight. This is an executive summary of the economics. So this is a twenty-five-year lease, or PPA, pardon me, a PPA is called a power purchase agreement. It's basically the function of it is saying, we're going to put a solar system on your schools, you're going to, you, uh, we ensure, like I said, to ensure, maintain it, cover all expenses to, to operate it, and you buy the electricity that it produces at a reduced rate than what you're currently paying. Uh, this, the, the solar systems that I sold you earlier account, accumulate over to four point four million dollars in savings over the, over, over the course of this PPA. That's what, you know, think about that number, four point four million dollars that you're going to spend, or you're going to give to the utility company, if you didn't do this, if you didn't, you didn't decide to move forward with this and, and purchase your, uh, electricity from the solar systems that are installed on your school, your school buildings.
That's over twenty-five years?
You're correct. So this is the cash gain over life. Pardon me. The PPA pricing would start at, uh, ten, ten cent, ten, ten point seven cents. It's got a two percent escalator per year, so it'd increase by two percent over the twenty-five-year period. Pardon me, let me move this little guy over here. This graph right here, you can look at later, it's cumulative cash flow that outlines the four point four million that, 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 uh, you would make over, over the course of this PPA. And slide number nine, we have the cost of doing nothing, I like to show the people this one, if you did nothing, you would pay sixteen, three point one nine million dollars for your electricity for the next twenty-five years. If you got, if you got the, the solar systems installed and went into this PPA, you'd pay eleven eight, so again, the savings of almost five million dollars over the course of, of the PPA. On this, just want to ou- outline again the PPA scenario that we're providing. Wealth of system paid over life, almost two million dollars, cash gain over system, four point four million dollars. In terms of the financing options we went through earlier, I want you to keep, to keep a track on this two percent escalator right here, that's, 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 that's the rate of the cost of increase of energy that, that, that would be associated with this PPA. I want to show you information on, on what your electrical rates are actually rising on in Ohio a bit.
How long does it need to, um, put in a program like this?
Uh, so it would be about two months before we started, so let's say, you know, something, and we're going to get to that down at the bottom, but if we signed, we, yeah, we'll, we'll get to that, but, but roughly, the construction is about two months, but the paperwork is, you know, contracts are about a month, permit, permitting by, by the contractor who would, who would, you know, I don't, uh, uh, who would be your local contractor, somebody we, we bet and, and select someone locally there with, that has plenty of experience. Um, so the construction of itself is a couple months, the pre-construction is a couple months, so I would say roughly four to six months. And, and, and then, actually, when I think about it, you had multiple buildings too, so we'd have to phase in, you know, we worked strategically and logistically as far as how you would want to implement that, do you want to do, do, you know, do you want to start multiple buildings at once? I advise that, but that's not, you know, that's something that you have strategically other goals on the ground, you know, the, they're just, but six months to get any, any, any amount of buildings up, because we'll bring in multiple contractors if needed to.
And how much cost this?
This costs you zero dollars, zero dollars, nothing, zero. Zero, absolutely nothing. We pay it because we own. Right, because we, we're going to, you're going to be buying electricity from us at a discounted rate than you're currently buying it from the utility company. So we're putting on a solar system, and all the energy it produces, you're paying for that energy. So that becomes one of our revenue streams. Also, since we own the solar systems, we get all of the subsidies that are, uh, mostly tax-based, that's why so, that's why schools don't usually purchase solar, solar systems, very rarely, I mean, I ran, you know, I talked to, I worked with a school district in California, I don't know how they got, um, they had fifty-one schools, they purchased their first eleven until they ran across our program. Um, and we make money from the revenue streams of electricity and the subsidies that, uh, associated with owning the solar system.
So let me, I may not understand this, so any ex- extra activities these solar panels produce, you sell to other outside sources, correct?
So thi- this, here, we'll, we'll, if you look at this, here, let me go back, I'm sorry, so if we're supplying eighty-eight percent of your a- annual electrical needs. So you're still going to be, no matter what, everybody's always connected to the grid still. Right, so you, since the solar system is producing eighty-eight of your, percent of your electrical needs, the other twelve percent, you're still purchasing from the utility company. So instead of buying it, so when, when a solar system is creating energy, that's what you're building, your buildings are using, and that's what you're, you're still paying for energy, but at a discounted rate. We sell it to you cheaper than the utility company, basically.
So I think if I'm a, if I understood Mr. Kilgore's question, it was, uh, uh, my understanding is that if you have solar power and you're generating more than you're using, the local utility has to, has to buy that from you, so that would be, technically, you would own that, that power, and would be selling it back to the local utility company, is that correct?
If, if we're supplying more than one hundred percent, if you solar systems, with what you have, the roof space you have available, are producing eighty-eight percent of the power.
Okay.
So, so what happened, it's called, so the answer, if, if, if we produce more and you couldn't use it, then yes, but that's not the case here, we're not overproducing. Our goal is to get the close.
So you're saying the eighty-eight percent that, the supply that we need, the extra, we'll say twelve percent, you're going to sell back to us?
The other twelve percent, you're going to buy, we're not, the solar system does not produce the other twelve percent, it's, it's not large enough, it doesn't, there's not enough space, we need more panels. So the other twelve percent would be sold to automatically by the utility company, which is more expensive.
Is that figured into our total cost savings?
Absolutely, everything is, yes, this is, the software's a national software that's, uh, been around for many years. Uh, yes, the, the, the short and simple answer, yes, it calculates your energy you're producing, or that, where, that we're producing, you're purchasing from us at the discounted rate with, which you still need to purchase, and it took, it takes all the utility bill information from your history that you've shared with us, your historical past, your, your energy loads, it's calculated these numbers here. So the answer is yes, it does.
And you would guarantee that you would sell the electricity that we, extra, extra energy that we needed at a lower rate than we can get it elsewhere, correct?
Absolutely, that's the whole, that's the whole purpose of this, sir, absolutely. And we're, we're, I'm going to show you right now, we're selling it to you at ten point seven cents. That's, that's slightly lower than, than, uh, than you're, than you're currently paying, but the, you're, and I'm going to get to the escalation of how you make more money over time, because that's, that's a couple slides down from now, but absolutely, everything would be contractual, the, 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 um, what happens is that any solar system, there's two meters, right, there's a meter that, that's the building for the utility company, when you install the solar system, the utility company comes and puts a second meter, a solar meter, to calculate everything it's producing. One thing that we like to do for schools, the, uh, tracking and monitoring of the energy production, it's really cool, you know, technology to look at, we put big TV screen in cafeteria gym so the students could see the, uh, the savings that are being calculated and created. And it looks, and it looks cool, it's techie, something for the kids to learn. But it's very advanced technology, calculates and keeps track of all the production in real time. So this system would be using, uh, three hundred ninety watt Hanwha bot- Hanwha panels, that's a tier-one panel, one of the top pa- panel producers in the world. Uh, looks great, we're going to look at some specs in a little bit. Again, it produces eighty-eight percent of our power, so that twelve percent would be, would be, would be purchased from the utility company. See here. I want to just, when you have, you know, if you're looking at this, or, or anybody else is reviewing this, and later, number fifteen is good, it's got some interpretation of financial ratios. It's a good present, it's good analysis of the economics on this, things that we've already reviewed. Seventeen is the cash flows, for anybody that's here, every year, the, your savings is calculated, that comes down to the four million over the five, twenty-five-year lifespan. On this, number eighteen, the, uh, here's something that I wanted you to look at, you're, we're using a national, for the economics that you're reviewing, an assumption that electricity is going to re- rates are going to raise three point seven eight percent in Ohio, you know, that's the calculation, that's what everything's built off of. But I'm going to show you, uh, some articles from your local newspapers that outline that your rates are actually going up significantly more than that. So your savings could be significantly more than the four point four million we've looked at. That's all based on, on, uh, utility escalation rate of three point seven eight percent. So if, 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 if the electrical rates go up higher, faster, then your, then your savings are going to be more. We're really, we're using really conservative numbers for you here. When you have time, these are just some articles that were written, uh, in your area about Duke's energy. Would, how, you know, they've been, they've been paid as one of the public energy number, number one for their policies. And this, and this newspaper publication, they're talking about electricity rates are slated to go up 33% over a five-year period. Here, the average Ohio resident price that electricity jumped 33%. So the rates are going up, you know, every, every year nationally, the national average is 7.8%. Well, is that, Brian, you're on, is that, is that what it was last? And so, uh, us using a 3.7% escalator, everybody, it's just a conservative number that, that really shows the capabilities to save significantly more money than, than, than what we're presenting right now. And then to the, to the steps that we were discussing that you asked about earlier, um, whatever that was then. So the, the process, once we're, here, this is where we're at, right here, right? We're, we have a customized proposal, financial submitted, the vote will go before the board. And then we get to, you know, start working on the PPA. It's a standardized document that's, that, that, that we use. So it's been around and, and it's, and, uh, nothing overly complicated about it outside of what we're discussing. It's, it's the simplicity, but it, but it makes sense for everybody, right, of a PPA. It's, you're, we, we put the solar system on, we, we bear the burden of the full expense. We ensure, we maintain it, and, and you buy cheaper electricity. Plus, you have the benefits of the school or alternative energy projects that's great educational tool for the students. We can dedicate it to particular whoever, when, when we do the grand opening, we can make the ceremony out of it dedicated to anybody who you want to in the community. And like we just, like I was saying earlier, we use local contractors, so it brings jobs to the community. We don't just leave, we stay with the school, we work with them interactively to provide programs for their, uh, school residents that, that go to that particular school in order to help bring solar solutions to the homeowners also. Just wanted to show you some specs of the panels. This is the panel that we'd be using, the Qcell 390. Beautiful panel, looks good. I, I, I'm really impressed by them. Wonder if you should, this inverter right here, this is called a, a three-phase inverter. Really, normally, what, what a solar system has is inverters on a, on a wall, bunch of inverters that convert the energy from AC power to DC power. But in the, in the reason we're using here, and you have, uh, uh, on these inverters on the wall, you have a bunch of strings that are running to, to, to the walls. The ones that we're gonna use for this technology, it's, every, every two panels gets its own inverter. So and they're, and they're underneath the, the actual panel. So there's no inverters on the wall, if you will. This is more advanced technology, gives better efficiency. Every two panels gets its own inverter, which is on the rooftop. Here are the solar mounts, just some of the material you could see. That'd be laid on the roof. And then I just wanted to shoot over to, I think we didn't get, Brian, we didn't get our, uh, okay, well, we, we're having, I guess I didn't make on the presentation, we'll shoot that off on a separate email. We're having a, a, uh, we'll call it our energy stimulus program where if, for participating schools that sign up by the, what is, I think it's by the end of this, by the end of May or the, or the middle of May. I need a, it's not on here right now, but there's no payment to any solar system that, that goes under, under contract for the next year. So it's our, you know, it's our method of trying to give back to the community in a bit. So it's no payments on these, on, on, no PPA payments for a year.
Will you say, can you tell what PPA is again?
Power Purchase Agreement.
Okay. So we would not pay any money to Duke for a year?
You would not, to us. To Duke, yes. The other 12%, if we produce 88% of your power, the other 12% you're having to buy from Duke, yes. They'll build, they're, they're gonna build you. Well, yeah, Duke's gonna get paid.
Is that a monthly?
Pardon me?
Is that monthly? Are you talking about monthly?
Mm-hmm. They're, they're monthly bills.
That 12% is monthly?
Well, the 12% of your energy needs are gonna still be purchased from Duke. If you have 100% of all those buildings that we were looking at have 100% energy load, we're producing with the solar systems, we're suggesting 88% of that energy, the energy usage needs. So whatever bills for.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was trying to figure out if the 12% is something we're paying monthly. It would be 12% of, it would, it would be 12% of our, yes, our, our overall bills. So yes, every month.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Because no matter what, you're, you're always still connected to the grid. And that's what federal law nationally, if you can be near a grid to be connected to, they make you for emergency reasons or whatnot. And, and, and that's how solar works. Whatever the solar system produces, sometimes we can get 100% production. And you don't have to buy any, any, any energy anymore from the utility provider. But it's just all based about how much space we have. If, for example, and they're, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay.
So, yeah, so the other 12%, they bill you monthly and, and, and that would be, that would be a necessity. How it happens, what's called net metering, is in the summer, you're gonna produce more energy than you probably need. You get credits that then get used later on during, uh, uh, times where, where, pardon me, in the winter, you, you would, you would overproduce more energy than, than you, than your buildings require. But then you get those credits in the summer and all that. Just kind of think about the, the needle spinning backwards through what's called net metering. A lot of states don't have net metering yet, and that's why there isn't solar programs there.
I have a couple of questions, if I could.
Please.
Uh, when you showed the map of how many districts in Ohio have solar, uh, it showed four, I believe, in our area. Do you happen to know what districts those are?
Let me, uh, um.
I mean, it's something you could maybe, if you don't know it, right off the top of your head, you could.
No, I, I don't. But, but we can zero in on that type of information for sure.
Okay. If you could maybe let us know at some point, maybe through email.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm assuming those are not through your company, those are just overall.
No, no, correct, correct. And it's very, very, there's 45 schools total out of 3,600. The penetration on that is, level is really low. But, I mean, you know, it drives, a lot of it is educationally. Uh, a lot of companies, you know, if I will, getting to a school board is time-intensive and, and, and it's not the simplest of processes. So a lot of companies decide to go elsewhere. Um, like I mentioned earlier, my dad was an administrator at a school for many years. So this program is something that I push. I care about it. Uh, but absolutely, I'm making a note here. I'm gonna, okay, I'll get you some more information on that.
Okay, and have you, have you done any work, I, I assume you don't only do schools, right? You do?
Correct. No, we don't only do schools. Uh-huh. And, and just to remind everybody, we're not the contractor. We're the funding, we're, we're the funding partner. So absolutely. Uh, this national school program is one, one program and many that, that we're looking to fund. Uh, but mostly to refund businesses, but nonprofits as often as possible.
Okay, and, and do you have any in the Cincinnati area?
I would have to, I'd have to get with the team. I don't, I don't have direct knowledge of all of our portfolio. Like I said earlier, I'm the CEO and so, but I'm not sure, Brian, are you, are you, are you on? Do we have anything in Cincinnati we're looking at right now? Okay, I don't know if we lost Brian while we were waiting.
Okay.
I'm not certain. My, my, my short answer is I'm not certain. There's a pretty extensive portfolio that we're looking to fund.
If, if that's something you could also get to us.
Absolutely, mm-hmm.
And then going back to the question about how long it takes to get them all installed on the buildings, uh, how disruptive would that be? I mean, if we're talking about a six-month installation, uh, would that be disruptive for, you know, for educational purposes? Uh, is it noisy? Is, you know, do you need space in our parking lots? How would that affect our ability to, to do what we do while that's in place?
So the actual construction would be about 45 to 60 days. The actual boots on the ground is 45 to 60 days. The six months is we get from beginning, I mean, I'm talking about permitting, design. So that's, you know, that's like from now to completely what's called PTO, that's where the utility company turns it on. So the construction itself is 40 six, and, and it wouldn't bother your needs at all. Would we need to look some space to hold some material? Possibly, yes, a little gated off area, but as far as, you know, most of the work is done on the, on the roof. Um, so we wouldn't be in anybody's way there. There might need to be, according to, you know, obviously each side is different. There might have to be some asphalt that we have to trench into. But, uh, these, these individual contractors we use are pros at this, is what they do all day, every day. And they've figured out the most efficient methods to not give them people's ways. So not, not very, not very intrusive.
Okay.
Because we're, we're mostly working on the rooftops.
I have another question. Julie, I, I'm sorry, did you have another one?
No, that's it.
Um, you talked about, uh, the middle of May to be able to make a decision in order to, um, realize one full year of, of no payments to you? That's, that's a pretty fast turnaround.
Yeah, it's not, it's like, I know the problem, I'm sorry, I'm up here. I mean, we can ask, try to get an extension, but it's, but now, but, but when I say middle of 15, that's just, you know, commitment. That doesn't mean we have to be, it's, it's a commitment that we want to move forward with. Obviously, we don't have to have the contracts. An LOI would, would basically stamp in that, okay, a letter of intent. Seals you in for that, for the program.
Obviously, well, maybe not obvious to you, obvious to our other board members, I think. Uh, we won't be taking a vote on this tonight. This is something that we would need to have some time to think about and, uh, you know, come back at our next board meeting and, and have a discussion amongst ourselves. Uh, so we, we wouldn't be making any kind of a commitment this evening. Uh, our next board meeting is?
I believe it's May 18th.
May 18th, yes.
Sure, I'm su, I'm sure we can get a three-day extension. Well, yes. It, it's, yeah, it, it's, it's really, uh, and we're available too. If you have questions, I know this is a lot of information and, and one sitting. And I try to, time was limited, so try to push through it as much as possible. But if you're going through this and, yeah, I'm gonna sh, share my personal email with everybody if you have a question. Uh, Brian Odl, who's our, who's our VP of Finance, should be on the call, I don't know, I can't seem to hear him. But, um, he's a direct contact for this program. It's under his purview and his department. But you will have my direct access and, uh, and contact information. So if you have a question about anything that Mike's bringing up, by all means, please, please reach out.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions?
Uh, no, I'm on standby for the information that he sends.
Okay.
Okay, we'll get that over, we'll get that over ASAP right now soon as, soon as we hang up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate everybody.
Okay, um, I think, I assume he needs to leave the meeting. We're still seeing his screen. Okay, all right. Uh, so that's something that we can, we can look at the information that he sends. Uh, my dog has decided she doesn't like being in our meeting anymore. We can, we can look at the information that he sends us and, um, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, volunteer my husband, uh, which hopefully he won't mind. Uh, he is an electrical engineer. He, he works on, actually, he works for Duke. But he, I, I promise he would not be biased about this. Uh, if, if we wanted to have him sit in when we discuss at the May meeting, I'm sure he'd be happy to, to discuss any of the, um, the technical aspects of this because obviously this is kind of outside all of our, um,
Expertise.
Expertise, yes. So if, you know, I'll, I will offer that, uh, it's up to you. Married to an electrical engineer, I can't say that I fully understood all of that. So, uh, if, if we want that and, um, I don't know if, if our business manager has much knowledge about solar, uh, you know, certainly she could join in and, and be part of the discussion. So let's, um, let's put that off until the May meeting. And, um, we can be thinking about it between now and then, if that's okay with everyone.
Fine with me.
Yep.
Well, you know that I am a pessimist and I do not trust people easily. Unfortunately, I guess, or fortunately. So, um, we were involved in a program several years ago. Um, Carol will remember this and I, I don't think Emmett was even on the board at the time. But we, we got this wonderful proposal and it just seemed like the greatest thing going. It was for the gym equipment at the high school. Carol, do you remember that?
Yes, I do.
And it was all free to us. And they had several around Ohio. We'll come to find out it was a pyramid scheme.
Yes, it was.
We were very fortunate in that we only ended up paying, um, $50,000 out of $450,000 project. But there were many, many schools. Uh, one school in particular in Hamilton had three and they ended up paying out $1.5 million. So, um, and, and I, I am not saying that this, uh, company is like that. I'm just saying I think we need to be very careful and, um, definitely get some more information. That's my opinion.
Okay, that was, that was, I mean, not that specifically, but, uh, that was why I asked if they had done any work locally. I would definitely want to get references and find out what kind of experience others have had.
And I will say, as the optimist, air lighting venture did go well. If you'll remember, we got the lights put up and, you know, it, it sounded similar. Um, so, yeah, so definitely worth a, a look into and see, you know, how it goes.
And I'm, and I'm sure they're not the only solar company out there if we wanted to go in that direction.
Yeah, the, the fact that they would do it at no cost, you know, assuming that's all completely legitimate and everything would be, would be really nice. So we have a month to do a little research, check, uh, you know, check for negative news stories, check Better Business Bureau, do whatever we want to do to, to make ourselves feel comfortable that this is all, you know, completely fine.
Another red flag for me is the fact that in order to get a free year, we have to make this decision within 30 days. That, that troubles me.
That bothered me too.
Thanks.
That is a very, very quick, especially with everything else. That is a very, very quick, uh, especially with everything else that we're going through right now and, and having to make all kinds of other, uh, decisions and plans. Um, yeah. And uh, thirty days might be enough to, to feel like we're ready to make a decision, and if we're not, we're not, that's, you know.
I'm gonna be saying no on it, cause I, that guy just sounded kinda leery, you know, he's out for his own pockets, then he's not gonna do any of the work, he's just lining up everything. So everything's gonna go, I don't know, I just have mixed feelings about it.
That, that's why I say, if we wanna go in that direction, I'm sure there are other solar companies out there that are local, that we could deal with, if that's the direction we wanted to go.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It seemed to me a big expense to have all this installed and with no cost to us. I would just think that that would be a major expense.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and that's, like I said, I'll, I'm, I'll, uh, I'll be asking my husband's opinion about all this, he's, he's, hasn't been watching, so he'll have to watch the recorded version, um. I'd definitely like to see what he has to say about it, um. You know, I, I know that uh, I don't know, solar is, is a great option. But, yeah, I, I, I am a little confused about how they can do it for free like that, because I know that it's a very expensive option to put in place also.
Mm-hmm.
So, well, let's, um, we'll discuss it some more on May eighteenth. And in the meantime, anyone who wants to do any looking into the company, the, the proposal, will look at the materials that he sends. Uh, and like I said, if we're ready to take a vote on May eighteenth, we'll take a vote. If we feel like we, we don't feel like we have enough information, we can wait. Uh, I mean, I realize that he's, he gave us that deadline, but if I, I, I don't like being pressured into making snap decisions on things like that. So I'd say if we're feeling uncomfortable, uh, probably better not to jump into it, but we have a month, so, um, let's, let's take that time, and like I said, if, if we would like, or if you'd feel more comfortable not having my husband, you know, he has, he has plenty of friends who are electrical engineers who could weigh in on, uh, whether, you know, this sounds completely feasible and all that stuff. Um, so yeah, let's just wait till next month.
Okay.
I don't see anything wrong with Jeff taking a look at it, how about everybody else?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll ask him to take a look, um, he won't be thrilled with the idea of having to actually take part in the meeting if, if that was necessary, cause he hates doing things like that. Uh, but he would do it for the school district, he's, he's an alumnus of Mount Healthy, so he would do it uh, for, for the schools. Um, do we have any other discussion? This is our open discussion portion of the meeting, anything anybody else wants to discuss?
Um, yes, does anyone know what's going on with scholarships now that a lot of kids aren't at school? But some of them will be graduating and eventually moving on to college.
I haven't talked to Dick Went, have you, Reva?
Um, I think we are still planning to do something with the coordinating council. Yes, I don't think that that's been ruled out, so we're still looking at, like you said, how we'll determine what students will receive things, but they are still getting into college, they're still getting, you know, awards and things, so, um, Mr. Glenn, I believe we will continue with scholarships.
Okay, and then, you know the process for them to apply for them?
Usually, I think they come out, the guidance counselors will let them know. You know, will tell that they, I think they just put them out on like the, um, daily announcements, well, huh, we don't have those anymore. Good, good question. I will ask, um, tomorrow in our cabinet meeting, we will have the principals there. So I will get with Mr. Buckham and find out how are they notifying the students of the, um, scholarships to apply for.
Fantastic, thank you.
Uh-huh, no problem.
Any other discussion? Okay. Uh, the neck, the date of the next board meeting, as, as already mentioned, is Monday, May eighteenth. Uh, currently scheduled for six PM. Tonight had to be rescheduled because, uh, ICRC, who does our recording and is, is handling this, uh, Zoom meeting for us, was pretty booked solid later this evening, so, uh, so we moved it a little bit earlier so that we could be recorded. Uh, if the time changes, we'll try to let everybody know. Uh, obviously, the board members will know well ahead, and that would be in the public announcement that goes out also. Uh, so I think we're ready to adjourn, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Yeah, I'll move. Second.
Moved by Ms. Zellis, seconded by Mr. Glenn. Um,
All in favor?
I'll say aye.
Aye, 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 okay, it's unanimous.
Okay, everybody stay safe and, um, we'll see you hopefully in person, but I'm guessing probably not, uh, in about a month.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, everybody have a blessed